Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are live.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Josh. Do you want to turn that back up?
Jamie, can you hear me now?
I don't think he's sixty yet.
Oh, probably.
I called Sandy. See how I was doing? I found out two weeks ago he had COVID. And I hadn't seen him. Like, I didn't go to the game last week. So I didn't see him, and I was thinking about him today, so I called Sandy. She's the one that told me.
I'm here by phone, so if you can hear me, I'm on.
Okay. Oh, shoot. You can hear me for sure. Hello, hello. That's good right there. Thanks. That'll start, I think, in June. They're hoping to be open by the end of February. Yeah. On this side. That side's all going to be store, and then this side will be the parking lot. Okay, we'll go ahead and start the city council meeting for Tuesday, December 28, 2021, at 7:00 AM. I mean, 7:00 PM. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll take a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Roll call.
Arturo de la Fuente?
Yeah.
Vera Zavala?
Yeah.
Sofia Sotelo? Sofia Sotelo? No, Diana Castaneda?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Mark Gornow called in tonight. He could not get here. So I need a motion to excuse or not excuse. She had to work tonight. He couldn't get off.
Motion to excuse Mark Gornow because of work?
I have a motion by Sophie, seconded by Vera. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. Okay, we need to vote in the meeting agenda, please.
Make a motion to vote on the meeting agenda.
I have a motion by Sophie and seconded by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. Visitors' comments? Do we have any comments today?
So my question was back to what was brought up in the last meeting just here at 6:00. And also, I wanted to know what the budget for the police department was from last year rolling over to this next year, because we didn't have a police force.
As for the union, any employee that wants to enter into the union, they can. They're not forced to. If they don't want to enter, they don't have to. If they do want to enter, they can. For the city, it doesn't, it's not any different to us if we have one in or one out. So anybody that wants to opt into the union has the right to do that.
That's not what I asked.
So every employee that's employed by the city of Mapton has the right to go into the union.
But that's not what I asked.
I missed a question, too. I thought it was just about the PD.
No, I asked what the money, what the money was from last year rolling over into 2022. What was the budget for this year going into 2022? Because we didn't have a police force.
Nothing rolls over. It's just a whole new budget.
Okay, so where's that money at? That's what I want to know.
It's in our general fund, where it stays until it's used by the police department.
So it's already parted out? Does it say it's got police department funds?
The police department always has funds, and we keep it funded, and, you know, in case we do get police officers, it's always had a fund. It's right around $600,000 a year. Just because we don't have a cop doesn't mean that we cannot budget for a cop, because we have three positions. We have to have the budget for those three positions.
Well, when I asked last meeting, Josh, that it was a lower, a lower dollar amount. So that's why I'm asking now that you're here, what the dollar amount is.
Well, the thing is, is that's not something that I, that I, as the mayor, do. That's something the council agrees on during the budget retreat. And so whatever the council agreed on during the budget retreat is what is put into play.
So the money from...
I can't give you an exact amount. I don't have my budget in front of me.
No, we can ask Josh. He's a financial person. He would know how much is budgeted, right?
Josh, can you tell us?
Yeah, so, so like I went through, so we currently have, we are planning for $243,070 in wages. And then that's going to be $102,700 in benefits, $22,000 in operating expenses, and then there is a set aside $218,740 for PD professional services. So depending on which way things go, so it's budgeted at this point for, so there's a chief and three officers. And then the reason it's so much budgeted in for professional services is if we ended up going with the county. So whichever way we end up going is what we have money in there for. And so the other thing to help answer the question, Rachel, might help. So the PD has its own section of the budget, but police department money is all out of the general fund. I would say, because the police department never supports itself. It's not an enterprise fund, so it doesn't, it doesn't make any money. It always costs us money. Now, they do get a little bit of money for the three-tenths money and some other, the criminal justice. I don't remember the exact fund off the top of my head. But they get some money from the state that, that helps kind of keep them afloat. But they always cost us something at some point, right? Right? We don't, we don't, we're not in the police department business. We have the police department for security. So, so they're always going to cost us, so they don't have really their own section of money per se, because we're going to pay for them anyways.
So Josh, is the full amount for that budget? For the police department, they have budgeted the total between the wages, the bennies, the operating, and the...
Sorry, yeah, so the total, when you put those numbers together, is $586,510.
So, okay, so was there any of that money used on anything else?
Was there any of that? Like I said, so it's all, it's all considered general fund money. But I wouldn't say that it was necessarily used elsewhere. There's, I would say, because you'd think when you say, okay, there's only one officer, well, then we're not spending that much money, but there's still, you're still going to have the building, paying for the water, the lights, all of that stuff. They're still going to have cop cars that break down every five minutes. So some of those things are constants anyway, even with only one officer.
So when we don't use that budget, let's say this, I'm throwing a number. Let's say we have $550,000 budget this year. We use $300,000. That just stays right in the general fund. That's where it stays, because that's where it's taken out of, is the general fund. So it just stays in the general fund. And it's money that you have to fund other things if you need it. Luckily, we haven't had to do that, because we've kept our budget very strict and very narrow. And in the past, if the council remembers, when we would do our budget, budget at the end of the year, the budget amendment, there would be eight or 10 different things we'd have to adjust budget on. But you see, now there's just a couple. We've got it, the budget, really in a fine line, and we're trying to. Because when you make your budget, you never want to go over that budget, right? You do, you need to. But that's what the budget's made for. And so as long as we don't go over that budget, we're good. And... It all comes, all payroll comes out of the general fund. Everything comes out of the general fund.
Okay, so then, so then...
Almost everything comes out of the general fund. There's very few things, unless it's its own line item, that does not come out of the general fund. Correct.
And I wanted to ask, what positions are open in the city?
We have no positions open. Oh, police department is the only positions we have open.
Okay.
And that's something you could have asked, you know, not on the record. Correct. Yes. Yes.
What old position is that?
The clerk.
It's the deputy clerk position.
So what is he right now?
He's the treasurer.
He's the treasurer?
Yes.
As a...
Jameson's position when she went to Sunnyside.
So was that position opened?
You need to not say names, okay?
No, I mean, I, it needs to be known. Was that position opened? And was it put in the paper? Because that's a government position. It can't be not open. It has to be open to the public. And I looked up today at the Daily News, and it wasn't open. That, his position wasn't open.
This position was, what are you talking about, Rachel?
No, I'm asking you what his position is, and you said he's the treasurer. And I asked, was that position ever opened?
Well, it's not open because there's a person in it.
So... Yeah, that's what I want to know. Was he just placed in it, or did you advertise for it?
I'll have to ask Sylvia that.
Yeah, no, it wasn't, because I already looked into it today, and it wasn't advertised.
Well, you shouldn't say that until you know, because it might not be in there today. It wouldn't have been advertised today. It would have been advertised six months ago.
Yeah, I did. I, I asked him to go back six months.
And that I don't know, because a lot of things are said on that, on that stand that's only have truth, so...
Excuse me?
Jamie. Juan. Jamie, can you answer that question for her, please?
I'd have, I'd have to go back and take a look at it. But you can, you can work through an interim position, which is what Josh was placed in, and it can lead to a permanent position through internal, internal promotions.
So, so this position did not have to be advertised, because it was an internal position?
No, it has to be advertised, because it's a government position. But, Rachel. I can't hear her.
Nobody's saying anything.
Excuse me. Sylvia wanted to say something. She doesn't have audio.
Sylvia. Okay. Barely.
Not well, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, but you know, that...
You're breaking up, Sylvia.
Okay, go ahead, Sylvia.
Hello? We, we can't hear you, Sylvia.
She can't hear you. Josh, if you can explain the situation.
What's that?
We can't hear Sylvia.
I understand. I can't really do anything about that, though. Can she call the, can she call the line just like Jamie did?
If you can call the line just like Jamie did.
Yeah, she's going to call the line. Okay.
Exactly. So, so for the record, when somebody's standing up at the podium, it's not an answer, question, answer, question, question, answer. You're allowed to say what you want to say and sit down. We don't have to answer a question, and by law, we really shouldn't.
Well, every time I ask a question, nobody ever gets back to me. So, I mean, that's why I'm here. And I'm sorry if it bothers you and Sophie, but I've always asked questions, and I've never gotten an answer back.
And that is not a true statement. You really shouldn't say that on the record, because that's not a true statement, Rachel. And, and this is going to get you in trouble if you're here and saying false statements. Okay, so let's just go ahead and move on. Did you have anything else you would like?
Well, no. I guess not. I'll look into it myself.
Okay, so let's go ahead and move on. Of what? Yeah, you think I'm in and ask questions? Yeah, definitely. To, yeah, and ask any questions that you have. It's not the place to do that. We're going to move on. Let's go ahead and vote in the council agenda. The consent, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, A through D.
Hello, hello? A motion by Sophie, seconded by... Hello, hello?
Sorry.
So we have a motion by Sophie, seconded by Vera. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. We have no public hearing. And we have no old business. New business would be approval of ordinance number 2021-1176, the 2021 budget amendment, number one, page 13 and 14, is what we discussed earlier.
Hey, I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2021-1176.
I have a motion by Sophie, seconded by Vera. All in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, do we have any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Next one, approval of resolution 2021-22, authorizing mayor to sign the collective bargaining, bargaining agreement on page 15.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2021-22.
I have a motion by Sophie, seconded by Judy. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. Approval of resolution 2021-19, authorizing the mayor to sign the contract with Yakima Valley Commerce of Governments for technical planning assistance. That's page 16 through 18.
I make a motion to approve resolution 2021-19.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. Staff reports. Josh, do you have anything?
No, ma'am, not at this time.
Jamie, do you have anything you'd like to report?
I do. I want to let the mayor and council members know that as of December 31st of 2021, I will be resigning as city attorney. The reason is, like all of us, I'm growing older, and I'm going to scale back my practice to some degree. I want to thank each of you for the years we've, we've had together. You've been devoted and good stewards for your city and representatives of your constituents. And I appreciated the opportunity to, to work with each, each of you in that process. I will be available to help with any transition that is necessary in the support to city in that transition and, and legal representation. So with that, I wish you all, all the best to go forward.
Jamie, I want, I want to thank you for helping me as much as you have, and you and Gary both, keeping me in line to keep the city in line and out of lawsuits and out of trouble. I really do appreciate everything that you've done for the city and, and holding my hand and yelling at me when you feel that I am doing something that could potentially harm the city in some way. And, and I just want to thank you so much for, for being there to answer my phone calls and my questions and, and guiding me in a good way and keeping us out of trouble. You have really been a godsend to me, and you and Gary in your office. And, you know, it's been four years. We haven't had a lawsuit in our city, and a lot of it has to do because of the way that you guys guide me and, and keep me on the right road. And so I just want to say that, you know, I, the city is going to miss you. And it's going to miss your guidance and, and you guys keeping us on the right path. And just thank you again, and I hope that your family and you have a great retirement.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor. And I've, I've appreciated the opportunity to, to work with you as well as staff, bottom to top, over the years. It's been a very rewarding, very rewarding process, and I wish, wish you each the very best.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Jamie, for everything.
You're welcome. Good luck, guys.
Juan, is there anything that you would like to add? Juan?
Uh, no, I have no, nothing new.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, this is my very last council meeting with you guys. I'm, I want to tell everybody, thank you for giving me the opportunity to help the city improve. In front of each of you is a list of accomplishments that I have helped with and has been done under my administration. There's grand total of about $7 million worth of funding that's come into the city. And a lot, a lot of stuff that, that we've done and we're going to be doing. I'd just like to go through this list and, and just remind everybody of the, of the work that's been accomplished in the last four years. So we got $50,000 for the city park from Honeyford. That completed our sprinkler system in that park. And it also helped repair the sprinkler system in our Fazel Park. And it helped us with a little bit of sidewalk work as well. We got $200,000 in a grant for the sidewalk around our city park and a new bus stop there as well. We got $176,979 for well number four improvement project. When I come on, well four, if you remember, would not work and would work. And so we got some grant money to fix that. Along with that, we got $18,500 for energy improvements on that same well from PPNL. We received $326,407 for the Main Street overlay project that was done about two months ago on Washington. We received $10,000 from the Parker Foundation to start our Mel Staldemeyer monument. About halfway there. We got $32,183 from a program through PPNL to replace all of our streetlights in our city. Every light is now LED lights. Along with a little bit of money from PPNL, $3,800 to help us with some of the improvements we've done on the city hall. We received $92,000, I didn't put that on here, for our first grant, and that's for the COVID relief fund, the very first monies. The city was one of the very first ones to put in an application for that. With that money, that done our new front, front office and repaired two offices upstairs, replenished those offices. So them other projects is already done within our city. The projects that we have funding for now that has not been accomplished, that will be accomplished within the next two years. I want you guys to be aware that when these are starting to be accomplished, this is monies that's coming from this administration. We're getting $241,700 for a new park and ride project done at the Governor's Park. We also got $47,000 for that same project. That was our, that was our match, and we got that funded. We got $2,681,185 for the Main Street project, which will be starting here in the spring. That will get Main Street from Washington to South Street completely done with sidewalks. We applied for a grant for overlay from South Street to Maple on Main, because I didn't have enough time to apply for all of it, so I wanted at least part of it done. So we got $400,000 to do the overlay on that street. And if the city works, they can get the rest of the street done, but they're going to have to work for it. I got $1,1.748 million to drill well seven and install that new well. If you remember, when well six was installed and drilled, our water rates went up almost double. We, we had to raise rates, what, three times increments to, to subsidize for that. And if you notice... And this well will not raise our water rates. I just received, two weeks ago, $277,706 on a solar project for the wastewater treatment plant. The full cost of that project is $452,000, but we have received a $277, and we are pending an application. We just submitted for $100,000. Now, every single one of these projects, or pretty much every single one of them, has had what the, the government calls a match. So with a match, if your project's $250,000, they'll say, we'll give you $200,000, but you have to match that $50,000. Now, in the past, anytime the city has gotten a grant, they've paid that $50,000. But this administration has paid none of those dollars. We've went out and found money from other places to finish that project. And so I just want the people to know that, as I've sat here for four years, I've sat here and I've worked very hard. Our audits are the best audits we've had in years, and you should start, you should still have. Next year, 2022's audit should be very, very good. Next year, 2022's audit should be very, very good. 2023's audit should be very, very good, because both of those years actually are focusing on these years of this administration. When I come in, we had 12 active lawsuits against the city. There's 12 different individuals suing the city. Some ex-employees, some people out in the city. I'm very proud to say that, since I have had this administration under my wing, we have not had one valid lawsuit. We have not paid one penny out. And it's the best the city's been in a very long time. Our insurance company is very, very happy with this. They said it's the best they've seen it in 15 years that she's been here. So I'm very proud of what we've done as an administration. I definitely can't take all their credit. My staff has worked really hard. GNO, our attorneys, YV Clog, we're a team, and all together, we have made all of this possible. And I've loved it, but I'm very, very excited about getting back to my life as well. And so I am not walking away. There's lots of things that I'll still do in the city, because I live here and I love this city. And I just want to tell everybody, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Vera. Thank you, Tudy. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Thank you, Sophie, for always being there and being there for me, helping me, getting in the cars, going out with me, doing your stuff with GMA, keeping our city moving. I appreciate you guys so much. And I look forward to seeing what the city has to offer. And with that, we'll go ahead and conclude this. We'll conclude this meeting at 7:28.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you, Jamie.
Night, Jamie. Take care. Happy New Year.
You too. Same to everyone.